Do not have a naturally loud voice. This is about it, right here. So if you're having trouble hearing me, could you just raise your hand and make me aware of it and I'll try harder? And that's for the whole board. We'll try to raise our voices so that you can hear us. So, good evening. The first thing on our agenda always is public comment. If you have come to comment on something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. Is there anyone here who's been here for that purpose? Or you've all come for a matter that is on the agenda? If you wish to speak on one of those matters, you need to ask permission from the chair to speak and come to the microphone over here, the one with temporary issues, but it does connect to FCTV. That part's working. When you come to the podium, please state your name and why you're speaking. So each of you, when you do that, thank you. Okay. The next thing on our agenda always, the minutes, Paul.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of June 11th, 2024, and June 18th, 2024 as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes passed. Thank you very much. Good minutes. The first...
Pam, vote.
Madam Chair, I'm just trying to restart the Zoom meeting so we can get our extra chair, our extra board member on. We had a technical snap.
Okay, and here is another little glitch. Let me explain this to you. Up in the corner until a few minutes ago, there was a black box in the lower right-hand corner. And that is a Zoom connection to the missing board member, Pam Harding Barrett. Pam had an accident. We're trying to accommodate her needs until she's able to rejoin us. And this, we've been using a telephone connection through that funny little black box right there that did not work very well for us. We kept forgetting that she was there. So this Zoom, we're hoping, will work better. The black box is a Zoom connection, and we're going to try to remember to have Pam, ask for Pam's vote first so that when she hears and gets to it, we don't have to wait long. So bear with us. So on the sound and on the Zoom. So you're part of a technical experiment here tonight. Just say when you're ready, Judd.
Yeah, unfortunately, it just doesn't seem to want to work for us right now.
She's there. Can you click on the top?
Did you pick my other speaker?
It would just be down here. So let's try the planning host.
She's in the middle there at the top, but very tiny.
All we need is her voice.
Yeah. Pam, can you hear us? Not if...
There she is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Dad?
I'm here. Can you hear us?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, Pam, we're going to try something. Can you hear me? Pam?
Yes.
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go back over the approval of the minutes to test out voting to see how this works. And each time, you're going to be asked to vote first. So get ready for that. Okay, so Paul, the minutes.
I reckon approval of the minutes of June 11th, 2024, and June 18th, 2024, as amended.
And a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Pam?
Aye.
All right, we're just going to go forward now.
Aye.
We'll try the best we can to make this connection work. The first matter before us, people are waiting for...
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. A plan of land to combine two adjacent parcels to create one lot. We pass that at 110 Scranton Ave. Who is here to speak for that?
I find this very distracting.
This isn't a good idea.
We were so close.
Yeah. She's, she's got to mute herself.
Good effort. Not ready for prime time. Mr. Clower for 100 Scranton Ave.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Brian McLaughlin. This is simply an A&R plan to combine these three lots into one singular lot for the purpose of merging with the town. They're Land Corps properties, so we're not altering the Land Corps plans, but we'll have multiple parcels within, within the lot. But for, for the town's purposes, we'll be merging these into one lot for, for zoning and assessment purposes.
Well, I see from the work the staff has already done that it's on a public way, that it's been previously approved under the subdivision patrol law, that it's clicked all the boxes correctly. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, but we have a motion. Bob, do you have one? Or Pam, this is your type of thing?
I move that the board recommend to endorse the plan as presented without regard to buildability or compliance with zoning.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The applicant is Robert and Karen Senna-Taccario. A plan of land to combine two lots into one at 106 Jamie Lane. Who is here to speak for this plan? Mr. Amen.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. I'm Bob Amant, attorney for the applicants. And this is a approval-not-reliant plan that simply shows the merger of two parcels of land, one of which is already built upon, into a single lot, not creating a new lot. And it's on Town Road, Jamie Lane.
Well, if there's a problem over there...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm going to pass you out correspondence from Attorney Amant in regards to the issue that I had identified earlier. In summary, the lot that is in question to be combined with the existing lot that has the dwelling on it was noted on the subdivision plan as park and drainage. Ms. Attorney Amant has provided correspondence which has cleared up that issue, which you have before you. I now recommend endorsement of the plan as they have included a note on the A&R indicating the issue and the solution.
And in front of you, Madam Chairman, is the plan with that note that's been added that the town planner has approved. And I'm holding the Mylar and three copies signed by the surveyor to submit instead of what you had previously.
Okay, in that case, there's no, no need to hold this up at all. We can act on it tonight.
That's my opinion. Thank you.
You have cleaned up the one thing that would have held it up, so...
I move that the planning board endorse the plan as presented without regard to buildability or compliance with zoning.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If it passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing that so expeditiously. Cape Cod Beach House LLC is the applicant. Site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 60 Frederick This has been before us before. We have a positive motion to read. Bob?
Okay, let's see. Scranton Ave. Let me get caught up here.
Would you like it? Here. Was that the one?
Draft, July 3rd, 2024. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Cape Cod Beach House LLC for the construction of a detached accessory apartment located at 60 Frederick Road under Section 240, 12.2 Site Plan Review, the zoning bylaw, with the following findings. The applicant seeks to construct a 799 square foot, two-bedroom detached accessory apartment above a separate storage area and one-car garage. Proposed accessory apartment will be 25% of the principal dwelling. Following all construction, the property will have a total of eight bedrooms, a six-bedroom principal's dwelling, and a two-bedroom accessory apartment. The site plan shows a proposed gravel driveway leading to the accessory apartment that is separate from the driveway from the primary dwelling, as well as one-car garage below the accessory apartment, which complies with Section 240, 9.1D, 1C, and 240, 14, 1.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240, 9.1 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. Four, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. Five, an affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission assigned by the property owner. Six, construction activity shall not cause erosion, fuel, or sedimentation into the abutting properties in town right of way. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion, sediment control standard conditions. Seven, the applicant shall install a dry well, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area. Eight, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abut as our public rights away. Nine, the applicant shall contact the engineering division for an address assignment prior to issuance of occupancy permit. Ten, the applicant shall contact the assessor's office for an inspection prior to certificate of occupancy.
Second?
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Are we going to see anything? Did we get any elevations or site plan? Or is this, we already looked at this?
Yeah.
We've seen this before.
Okay, this is just a vote.
We saw this at our last meeting. We, we asked for this...
I'm all set. I forgot which one it was.
Okay, so there is no discussion?
Well, yes. I have a comment because I don't remember seeing number 10 before. And I think it's a good thing that we maybe have it out of all of our decisions like this. The applicant shall contact the assessor's office for an inspection prior to certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, it's, if I may, it's a new condition that the assessor's office has started to put into the referrals. So we are going to start adding it to your accessory apartment approvals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I follow up on that? What kind of inspection is that?
They measure it.
What are they looking for, the assessor's office?
Yeah, I mean, I don't work for the assessor's office, so I couldn't tell you exactly what they're looking for, but I suspect that, you know, it's livable conditions. It's just documenting the condition of the apartment as presented.
Thank you.
And that will be for, for all the things that come before us, not just ADUs? Is that right?
Well, specifically for the accessory apartments. And that's something that they've recently added into the referrals that they provide you on these accessory apartment applications.
Okay, and it's a step in enforcement?
Correct.
Okay. So we've heard that. We're ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
If you didn't hear everything that Bob read and you want a copy of it, you can always get a copy in the planning office. And I don't believe they're online, are they?
No.
No, I think you need to go to the office in order to get a copy of the, the vote and the record. And the planning office is in this building in the opposite wing upstairs. And they're very friendly, so it's easy to do that. Okay, next we have... An application, this is from Aiden Welch. A site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 128 Lake Shore Drive. That would be on Jenkins Pond. Who is here to speak for that?
Madam Chairman?
Madam Chair, notices.
Do you want to read the notices?
Yeah. Madam Chair, the notice for this application was published on June 21st, 2024, and 44 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. Could you give your name again, please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name's Aiden Welch. I'll be presenting today an attached apartment dwelling unit to our access, or to our standing element at 128 Lake Shore Drive for the purpose of, to accommodate a, a growing family and so I can keep a close eye on my mother, who's recovering from major back surgery as of recent. So pending any questions, I know you have the plans in front of you. I brought my own printouts and we have it on the board, but be willing to go through it, take any questions.
Could you just walk us through the plans?
Absolutely. So here, you'll notice on the bottom left, the larger, that is our existing element at 128 Lake Shore Drive. And to the right of it is the proposed dwelling. It is 727 square feet attached. What you see now on the right side of the screen is the existing unit. Use the mouse. Yep, so this is what we currently have at 128 Lake Shore Drive. This is just a bird's eye view of what will be added. I have some more slides detailing the actual floor plans beneath it, but the entrance, entryway will be facing the street where my mouse is currently moving back and forth. See...
Could you just put that back for a minute?
Yep.
It is, it is attached to the house?
Yes, it is.
But it appears to be a breezeway. Is that right?
It is...
It's like a bridge.
A deck or a...
It is a deck, yes. It's a deck and attached by roof and by deck.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you.
So moving on, let's see if I can... This is the first floor site plan. So the entryway will be right here by the porch. As you enter in, we'll have the first floor. So I might be looking at this from the wrong angle? Let's see.
Yeah, that's the first floor, and then on the right-hand side, I believe, is your second floor.
Yes, yep. So right here, this is the entryway of the door as you walk in. This is the first floor living room. You take a right, we have a bathroom, all utilities, electric, plumbing, septic. We'll run off the existing plan, or the existing element. Moving towards the back, just be a simple dining room, sink, again, all utilities for water and electricity already there in the ground. Then back this way, this is the entryway to the second floor, a staircase going up and curving to the right, which will take us to the right side of the screen showing the second floor. As you will then come up from the second stairs to a second bathroom directly above the first bathroom, and then leading to the bedroom, the one bedroom.
And all that fits inside 727 square feet?
Yes, it does.
Pretty snug.
It's been a, a year of planning and resubmitting to get to this point. Yes, ma'am. Below that is a shot of what it will look like from the street. So from that attached unit, everything to the right is currently there. Everything to the left will be added. You can see the entryway will be right here where my mouse is. We've got the two windows with that first bedroom up on top. Let's see. Some more pictures of the side of the house. This would be the west side of the ADU. It would feature a door in the rear that would lead into the kitchen and the dining room and into the backyard. Image in the center, I believe just more detailed with some mentions on it. And you can see what that protruding deck would look like facing the street. It's right here on the right. Attached is currently what it would look like, and the ADU would feature the same exterior, so it would all match perfectly, look like one flush building altogether. These are the shots of the existing unit right now, the front, the rear. It's our dog Hazel. The side, this is the side that it will be attaching to, and then the east side of the house. Pending any questions, that is the end of everything submitted.
How close does that bring you to your lot line?
The, let's see, I have to scroll back up. Madam Chairman, 2B.
12 feet. Right here, 12 and a half.
It's within the standoff distance? Like, I can't remember off the top of my head what that distance is.
12 and a half, it's showing it.
It's fine.
It shows, yeah.
Anything over 10 is good. Okay, I think that we've seen the project. Are there any comments, questions from the board? Any comments from the public? The board review of this project shows that it checks all the boxes, that it is within all of our bylaws, so it's, unless we hear concerns from the board, I think that what we would like to do is ask the staff to prepare a positive motion for our next meeting, which would be July 23rd. And you're welcome to comment here as we read that. You don't have to. Pretty automatic.
Good.
Thank you. Nice project.
Nicely done.
Madam Chair, anything more?
Thank you. I think that brings our ADUs counting these two tonight to 57. Is that right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, they're mounting up. Michael O'Connor. A site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment at 44 Crooked Meadow Road.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself from this project because one of the objectors has worked for my husband for multitudes of years, and I've known about it forever, so...
Goodbye. Paul?
Notice.
Notice.
Madam Chair, the notice of this applicant, the application was on, published on June 21st, 2024, and 29 abutters were sent letters by regular mail.
Mr. Clower?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower. I am an attorney here in town, and I'm representing the applicant, Michael O'Connor. I apologize for being a little more informal tonight. I did, it's too hot to wear long sleeves. I'm melting as it is. As I said, I'm here representing Michael O'Connor, the owner of 44 Crooked Meadow Road. I'm joined by Mr. O'Connor tonight. He is applying for a site plan review for an attached accessory apartment. Because it is attached, this board is the only reviewing board for this project. This property is located towards the western side of Jenkins Pond at the intersection with Blacksmith Shop Road. The lot's just over 20,000 square feet, it's 20,512, and it's zone agricultural. Presently contains a single-family dwelling with four bedrooms. To be precise, it's three bedrooms in a study, but the study meets the Title V definition of a bedroom, and it was permitted as four, and the septic design was designed with a capacity for four bedrooms, having a groundwater flow of 459 gallons per day, where 440 gallons per day are required for a four-bedroom, all of which is noted in the referral from the health department. We're requesting a site plan review approval to construct the attached garage with habitable space above pursuant to 240 6.1B. In connection with this proposal, the applicant intends to remove privacy from the existing study by putting in a four-foot cased opening, which will eliminate it as a bedroom. Proposed garage will have garage and storage space on the first floor, which is separate and apart from the ADU. The second floor was, is an 800 square foot, one-bedroom apartment, which is served by two entrances, an interior stairway with a dedicated entrance and an exterior stairway. As noted, we are eliminating an existing bedroom, and health has signed off on that. This project has no bearing on conservation, and it is in line with zoning requirements. The resulting lot coverage by structure is 16.2%, where up to 20 is allowed. While not a concern of the planning board necessarily, there was a front yard determination made for Crooked Meadow, so that this project is not located in a front yard setback and complies with all setback and lot coverage requirements. As noted in the staff report, this meets all the requirements for an accessory apartment. Lot's more than 7,500 square feet. Principal dwelling is owner-occupied. Mr. O'Connor's a young firefighter here in town, recently engaged. There is one proposed bedroom in the ADU where two is allowed. The proposed ADU is 800 square feet, which is exactly 40% of the primary dwelling. And though it is in a water resource protection district, there's no increase to the bedroom count. This meets all the design standards set forth in the bylaw. It has the appearance of a single-family dwelling with an associated garage with the habitable space blended into that garage, as this board has often sought. I believe that this is very much what the board intended in passing the ADU bylaw. I believe that you can and should approve it, and I would be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Could you go through the drawings so we could see? And as you do, could you point out the parking?
Sure. So on the site plan, you'll see here, there's, there's actually garage spaces within the existing house, and there'll be garage spaces here. This is the, the driveway's laid out here with dry-laid pavers, so this will be the parking area out front. So there's more than ample parking, certainly more than, than the, the three spots that would be required for a primary house and one accessory dwelling. So this is the proposed garage, which is attached to the primary house. You'll see the plans here. They don't show the breezeway connection because they are modular plans, but this does show the breezeway connection here. You'll see the first floor has the garage and utility space here. It's a workshop and parking area. This is separate, there's a separate dedicated entrance for the ADU, which is shown here. And then there's also an exterior entrance to a deck located on the southern side over, eastern side over here. The ADU includes a living room, bathroom, bedroom, and kitchen dining area, all is set forth there. The primary house, we did note, had a, will have a four-foot cased opening made to eliminate this study as a bedroom, so that'll no longer be a fourth bedroom, because there'll be both an entrance down here and then a four-foot cased opening facing the kitchen to make this one contiguous room.
What are, Kevin, what are those triple lines there with the red marks on them? What is that about?
So that's, that's showing where the studs are going in to make the four-foot cased opening. You'll see here, four-foot CO is cased opening. So that's just showing the alteration to the existing plans.
Okay.
That's, that really is the gist of it. There'll be three bedrooms remaining on the second floor of the primary house, and it's very much in line with what the board looks for in terms of ADUs.
There's an interesting thing about this. It appears to be from a company that's now going to specialize in designing modular ADUs. Is that right?
Apparently.
Right.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. I, I kind of got roped into this just recently as a favor to Mr. O'Connor. So I am not familiar with the company that's designing the ADU itself, but...
Well, you can Google them.
I will. I will after this.
But it's interesting that there's a new industry springing up.
Mm-hmm.
You can have them, you know, trailered in, in effect. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, the breezeway, it's kind of stretching the definition of a breezeway.
So that's been reviewed with the building department?
Yeah.
And they've signed off on that as being attached?
Yeah.
So that is how we're proceeding, and if the building department were to find that it's not attached, then we need to come back?
Okay.
You're used to, you're old inspector.
Yeah.
He wouldn't approve it.
Yeah.
The whole different view.
Yeah. And then I, I don't have a copy of the letter from the abutter, but she had some concerns.
I, I think the one concern I didn't address in my presentation was dry wells, which we're certainly happy to have added to the plans and can do so before the next hearing.
Judd, the letter from the abutter? Or you have it, Paul?
I have it.
It should be in all of your packets.
Yeah, it was in the packet. My, my company is, it says revised. I don't know. Is Michelle Roya muted at the last, she raised a series of issues about this project, and I can not have them addressed.
So I, I believe we have. You know, she had concerns about counting the square footage. I've made it clear that the garage space and utility workshop and bathroom on the first floor are not part of the ADU. The ADU is limited only to the second floor. It is 40% of the primary dwelling. It is, we did address her concerns relative to the bathroom, bedroom count, because the house was originally permitted as a four-bedroom with septic capacity for four bedrooms, and the health department has signed off on that. And she managed, mentioned some concerns relative to drainage, and we're happy to add dry wells to this project as well.
What about screening, too? She was talking about light and...
So I don't think there's any plan, I mean, there, there would be a light on the upstairs deck from an entry point. We are happy to make that dark sky compliant with downlighting. But we are, you know, we are 10 feet off the property line, which is what's required. She noted in her correspondence, she's 26 feet off the property line.
Twenty-six, so she's thirty-seven feet.
Paul, you're going to question the square footage count? Whether or not it included to get to the seven ninety-seven square feet, which puts you just under the wire of what's allowable? Does that include the things that are on the garage level?
No, it does not, because those are separate and apart. There's an entrance, there's dedicated entrance for the ADU on the first floor. That is not part of the garage.
And I noticed that in the, not counted, this doesn't seem to be taken into account. Is that because we're not used to it yet, the part about the inspection by the assessor's office?
So we didn't get an assessor referral on this application as of yet? But we refer with them to make sure that they would like that condition.
We'd be happy to include that as conditioned anyways.
Yep.
Right, if, if that's what we're going toward, then it should be consistent.
Mm-hmm. If I may, just on the referral end of it, I was reviewing the staff report and it was our mistake. We copied multiple Health referrals in there. So I just wanted to go through the referrals that we did receive for the record.
Okay, go right ahead.
If I may. So additional referrals that we received were the Fire Department, which had no comment.
Yeah, I was looking for.
We did get a referral from the Water Department, and I will read his comments into the record. He says, "The new detached dwelling will lead an independent water service from, from the water main to the new dwelling." "The water service needs to be a one-inch polyethylene and the water meter will need to be installed inside the home and not in the crawl space. Please come to DPW and fill out a water service application. If approved, to move forward with the project." We can also submit these to the applicant as well. And in addition to that, there was a referral from the ZBA, which had no comment. So that is all for the referrals.
Okay, then. Anything you want to add? John?
I'd like to have you address the pictures that were received. I know you're talking about dry wells for the new structure, but what about the runoff of the soil on the lot into other people's?
So I don't believe I received those pictures, so I, I'm a little hesitant to speak to them. But I can tell you that the, the applicant would be more than happy to work with the abutter to address any drainage and runoff concerns. We're certainly happy to add dry wells to the proposed garage, which will help to mitigate that.
Well, that, that won't, I mean, it's not there now, so it's not going to mitigate what's, what the problem is right now.
Well, we could tie the house into the dry wells too.
I mean, there's, there's a serious issue here, according to these photographs that we have.
Perhaps.
From the existing structure.
If I may, I have the document.
Okay.
How old is the principal structure?
Two years.
Two years, okay, so it is a new.
Still in construction, just about.
Yeah. Let's you look at it from Google, where it's a lot strip.
So for the record, this is the letter that we received from the abutter. Is included in your packet and the pictures that you are referring to are on this page, following page, and a third page. And so the third page is from twenty twenty-two. These pictures here are from August of twenty-three, so let me see if I can get to the full screen. And then most recently, June and July of twenty-four. May be appropriate perhaps that the applicant or the abutter perhaps speak to these instead of myself.
Sure. And just certainly happy to have the. And I would just note that I think an appropriate condition would be erosion and sediment control during the construction process until landscaping is installed and taken root to address that.
Of the whole site?
Did you hear that?
Um, I, I don't think that would be an issue. I think we could certainly do that.
And how about just absolutely, all runoff will be contained in the site?
Well, I don't think it's ever, I don't think it's ever reasonable to say all runoff will be contained on site because there's always runoff, even if it's a raw, even if it's raw land, there's still going to be runoff. I think we can't have any increased runoff onto, onto abutting properties. I think that's a distinction that should be made, because there's always going to be some existing runoff. So I don't think it's reasonable to say that all runoff is contained, but we can't increase the amount of runoff. But we could tie the, we could tie the existing house into the dry wells, that will, and we'll show that on a revised plan.
And would the new structure also be tied into dried wells?
Yes, we, we will add dry wells to the site. We'll add dry wells to the site plan, so we can tie both the new structure and the, and the house into dry wells.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I am concerned about the runoff. I mean, the woman says she's lived there for forty-six years, never had runoff, and now it's a serious problem with runoff. So putting in some tanks may or may not solve the problem, but I think that has to be addressed before we approve this.
So I think that by adding erosion and sediment controls during the construction process and adding the dry wells, that will address that. You know, I think that there is, the house was built as a, as a byright matter. Understanding that we're here tonight seeking site plan review approval, I think that these can be tied in together to improve any issues that have occurred onto the abutting property.
Additional vegetation helps with erosion as well.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, he's been through the construction process and hasn't gotten to the landscaping aspect of it.
And we, we don't have a landscaping plan here.
We don't typically submit landscape plans with ADU applications.
I know, but, you know, sometimes they help.
Yeah.
Do you want to comment on the, the scale of the, the proposed building and the existing and proposed building together compared to the scale of the abutters buildings? That was also part of the abutters letter.
So I, I don't have any.
If it meets our numbers, that's all we. If you don't get to comment whether it matches the neighborhood, it's not.
Well, it's part of the character of the neighborhood. I believe that it does. So, and he can, he can answer the question.
Okay.
It fits or it doesn't?
I don't think, issue of comments from NABA. I think what's being offered here is a dry well. It's not on the drawings. The drawings have to be revised to show what the dry well will be done there. So I think as minimum that needs to be done, and they can do the calculations leading to that. It's not because the NABA says it's runoff, it's because you're offering to do something, but it's not shown.
So I was, I was made aware of this letter from the abutter today. So we obviously haven't had a chance to have any plans revised. We'd be happy to have the plans revised to show dry wells, both for the proposed garage and for the existing home to address those concerns. And we can also show erosion and sediment controls.
Okay, so this is likely to be continued. Is there any comment from the public on this plan? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Diane Wells and I live at forty-seven Crooked Meadow Road. And I just want to comment on the fact that Michael O'Connor has done nothing but improve the neighborhood. It was an abandoned house across from us that was used as a crack shack. He found who owned it, rehabbed it, and is now rental property in town. Anything that happens in our neighborhood that involves him, he involves all of us. Letting us know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and how. I have no problem with what he's trying to do, because he's, he's meticulous. And I've watched him, you know, I watched the house go up, I watched what he's done with landscaping. I've watched what he's done with the barrier walls, as well as the shrubbery, all across the back of the, of, all across the back of the property. I mean, I, you know, at first was not a, a fan, because we live on a small road and there's now twelve, I think, condos that were kind of scrunched in. But we were lucky enough to have Michael across the street from us. So I just wanted everybody to know what a hard worker he is and what he's willing to do to make the neighborhood better. Because he plans on being here and raising a family. So I, I have zero concerns about the fact that he is going to do it correctly. He's going to do it well and he'll do it within the parameters that you set about.
Thank you. It's good to hear that endorsement. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about this plan? Come forward.
So, I am Michael O'Connor. And I am the builder at forty-four Crooked Meadow, applying for the ADU. This retaining wall and the erosion control has been an issue. I've cleared it up with the town, with Gary Street, the building commission. I've been building this retaining wall out back slowly over time, adding blocks as I can. The topography of the lot was drastically changed. I had filled in, I brought two hundred yards of sand in the last couple weeks to fill in the area where it was low, and I've drastically changed where the water is going. I have not landscaped the area yet or my own backyard due to the fact of the ADU, because I'll have to connect it to the septic. So for those reasons, I have not put in the other drywall. I have a pipe that goes into my backyard, into the center of my backyard for the drainage. I can put those drywalls in this week for the existing house, no problem. I'm building a couple other houses in town. We're doing the same process, the three-foot concrete structures with the pipe and the stone. So I have you assured that I can take care of the retaining wall, no problem, and stop all the erosion that was there. There was a seasoned assist filed about the retaining wall. I went and straightened that out. Extended the wall to stop the erosion. I have two more blocks to add, and then there should be no more erosion going anywhere. If you have any questions about the landscape, I could tell you the plans for the landscape as well.
Okay, I, I have a comment about your proposal. I think it's really good-looking.
Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be a good project when it's done. But we have hit a, a smaller road bump here, just having the drawing adjusted. So I think what we're going to do is continue it. And you'll come back and we, we'll see that it's checked all the boxes. That will be good.
No problem.
But thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
So if we could, we will continue.
Sure, Ken. Your decision deadline is not till September. Yep, July twenty-third.
Good, thank you. Next up.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Next up, we have, the applicant is the Falmouth Service Center. A site plan review application to construct a two-story addition to the existing building at six eleven Gifford Street. Mr. Amen.
Notices.
And the notices, Paul.
Madam Chair. Again, this particular notice was published on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and forty abutters were notified by regular mail.
Mr. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm Bob Amen. I'm a Falmouth attorney and I have the privilege of representing the Falmouth Service Center, which most of you are probably familiar with. It's in a multi-service organization for over forty years in Falmouth, providing food and other safety net programs to the vulnerable citizens of Falmouth and surrounding towns. With me tonight is the chairman of the Board of the Service Center, that's Brian Teck, and also, among other people, the executive director of, of Falmouth Service Center. I want to point out to you that from the Falmouth Enterprise, just last week, Karen has been honored by the state as a, get it right, a heroine, a two thousand twenty-four Commonwealth heroine by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. And in recommending that award to her, Dylan Fernandez talked about her incredible work and the incredible work of the Falmouth Service Center. This plan prepared by BSS Design and Tom Bunker is here, the surveyor. I should also introduce Greg Cerullian. Greg is the architect, ResCom Architecture, designed the plans for the service center. So what this hearing is about is an addition to the Falmouth Service Center. And on the plan before you, I show the property on Gifford Street, six eleven Gifford Street. And in blue is an outline of the existing facility. It was approved by special permit in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, rather, and built shortly thereafter. It was expanded a bit, I believe, pursuant to amendment to the special permit in two thousand twelve. Some parking was added pursuant to administrative approvals obtained from the Planning Department and the Board of Appeals last year. This is a, a four-acre site, quite large. And the building, the existing building is set back over two hundred and twenty feet from the street. And that, that, there are important things to know about the site itself. This line running parallel to Gifford Street is a line of the wildlife corridor deer migration, but we're not in that portion, that section, Area One, under that bylaw. Back here is a line that shows the nitrogen-sensitive area that's to the east, that is to this side of the property. The plan doesn't show well, but there is a, I believe it's maybe two hundred foot wide Commonwealth electric easement with high wires running from north to south on the east side of the, of the property. So there's no abutting development for a significant distance to the, to the east. To the south is an affordable housing project of the Falmouth Housing Corporation. And to the north is a residential condominium approved under Chapter Forty-B. In yellow, I have outlined the addition. It's not a big addition. The, and it is no closer to the street, so again, set back almost two hundred and twenty feet from the street. And on the side, that is the north side of the existing building, so that it's buffer from the residences to the south. And it's located over almost two hundred feet or more than two hundred feet to the closest residence, condominiums to the, to the northwest and north. The property is in the Water Resource Protection District. And that's because the town water supply of Long Pond in the town forest is proximate to the, to the west. And so there are certain requirements in terms of nitrogen loading that need to be met for that. And the town also looks closely at stormwater runoff within the Water Resource Protection District. We have submitted calculations to show that the waste from the facility is the equivalent of approximately a two-bedroom house. Just the nature of what goes on there, the volunteer labor primarily that is used for the running of the center. People are not there for a long period of time. A food distribution, a major component of what the service center does, but by no means the only thing that they do, occurs only ten hours a week during five two-hour sessions on each day of the week. That is, there's Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. There are two hours midday. There's a two-hour food distribution period towards the end of the day on Wednesday. And then on Thursday afternoon, by appointment only for seniors, there's also food distribution available. What's happened in the past four or five years, particularly since COVID, there's been a dramatic increase in demand for the services of the service center. When I was on the board of the service center for a number of years, I used to always wish that the service center could go out of business. And even in the best of times, even in the best of times, there'll always be a need for a place like the service center. But in the recent years, the demand has, has increased. And so the services have increased. And the goal of this addition is to provide some additional space for preparation of the food to be distributed, and I don't mean cooking, I mean just the assembling of it. And also space for the distribution of free clothing and home goods for people who are at the service center while they're collecting food. We don't think there'll be any significant increase in traffic because it will only be the people who are there for the food who are using these facilities. And the demand is based, not based on the size of the facility, really, it's based on the need in the community. And the question is, can the service center adequately serve that need? Well, with this addition, they'll be better able to do it. And fortunately, the site is so large that there's a substantial parking available and this long, long queue, that's possible on the driveway that starts at Gifford Street and runs all the way around the building. And to this point, it's about four hundred feet long. And since COVID, the distribution has changed at the service center, the distribution of food. It used to be, clients would arrive at the service center and go inside and, and collect food from counters, much as they might at a, at a grocery store or a delicatessen or something like that. Today, the distribution is done outdoors and orders are taken. Volunteers then pick up the food that's available to meet the people's requests. And then it, it's delivered to the clients at their cars. So there's a significant parking area back here. There are fifty-four parking spaces here and then additional spaces along the building. Now, based on the town's parking requirements and allocating most of the building to retail-type activity and some of the building to, to offices, because on the second floor of the buildings, there are offices that are available to other nonprofits and for. to other nonprofits and for counseling of, of clients, so they can have help in, in getting all of their entitlements and assistance and applications and the like.
Counting volunteers, office workers, employees, and clients. About how many people really, at maximum, would be there at a time?
I'll turn to Karen to answer, answer that question. But remember, the people are only there for a short period of time, arrive, get their food, and then they would leave. And what I will say, again, before getting Karen's answer to that, is that if there is ever a time when there is congestion, then the Service Center's solution, obviously, because they, their mission can't be to turn away people, their mission is to serve everybody in need, what they would do is adjust the hours. So to spread the people, also, there are limits on how often someone can come to the Service Center to receive the groceries, and maybe Karen can remind me and you as to, as to what that schedule is. Karen, can you come up?
Good evening. I'm Karen Delaney, Executive Director of the Falmouth Service Center. We have approximately 10 staff in the building, and some go between there and the hand-in-hand thrift shop. And we have, for a given shift of food distribution, we have approximately 25 volunteers that come to run the food distribution. And then clients are in their, for the arrival of their order to the time they leave, they're there for about 15 minutes. And there's a, there's a turnover. So we can serve anywhere from 200 households in a two-hour time period, and the, the turnover is very rapid. As Bob said, pre-COVID, they would be in the building about 25 to 45 minutes, and now they're in the building in this new model for about 10 to 15 minutes total. So the, the parking turns over quite quickly.
Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice.
Thank you.
Bob, you've drawn the yellow, so it shows it's, you know, a tack on. But isn't there a part of the new addition that would be on top of one piece of the existing? Or did I read the drawing wrong?
There is some second floor, some offices being added, but I don't think they're on top of the additional. Are they? So Greg says yes, they are. So we also have here...
I think you've got some elevations.
Yeah, we have the elevations. They're part of our submission. And Greg, what'd you talk about? Just describe the building, the addition? So you've got all your plans?
Again, for the record, Greg Cerullian, Principal of ResCom Architecture. So this plan, you can see, is the first floor. That box, unfortunately, there was a red line around this, but it looks like this is a black and white. This is the line of the existing to the top of the page. To the bottom is the addition. And as you pointed out, you are correct that this is the addition below, and there's a small sliver of office space that sits over the existing.
Yeah, it's a complex design. It's a good-looking design, but it took a while to understand the elevations.
Better? Yeah, it is a little confusing. So as you look at, this is the front elevation that faces the main street. Essentially, this structure here is the primary roof line, and there's a small lean-to roof that goes here. We're building on top of that. So that's the part that builds out over the existing. And then this is the, the addition line that goes to the left. We probably have, just for comparison, the existing drawings, where you can see that existing roof that we're building over. And then there's a small vestibule that would get demolished, so that we would butt to this line. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Did everyone understands it?
Yep. Any other architectural questions that I could answer?
Not for me.
Not for me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So the lot coverage is only 6.18%. It's quite small. Again, it's a four-acre lot. So we don't have a lot coverage problem. But in the Water Resource Protection District, a special permit is required from the Zoning Board of Appeals if the lot coverage exceeds 2,500 square feet. It's quite a small standard. So that's why the project, that is, the facility was approved by special permit back in 2000, and why we need to amend the special permit before the Planning Board now. That hearing's scheduled for later this month, the 25th of July. A lot of issues were raised by the engineering report, Engineering Department Report, and the Planning Department Staff Report. I think we have addressed them all, although since we only got the, those referrals and, and reports in the last couple of days, we only submitted correspondence addressing different issues and requesting certain waivers, and we did that today. And I can go through that with you if you want. It might be ambitious, but my hope is that the Planning Board would be able to issue a decision in two weeks if the planning staff agrees that we have addressed all the issues, and that we'd have that in time for the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing.
Let's check through them, then. There was the Engineering Division's comments about a parking table to be added?
Yes, and we added the parking table. And the, as I said earlier, I believe, the number of parking spaces required under the town's bylaw is 57. We're providing 71 spaces. There presently are 65 spaces, and all those 65 spaces were approved by the Board of Appeals' Administrative Approval and the Planning Board's Administrative Approval in 2023. So the changes in parking are that 10 parking spaces across the north side of the building are going to be reduced to six, because that's where the building is going substantially, on parking area, walkway, and ramp area. That's where the addition is. So we're going to lose four spaces there, but we're going to add, propose 10 spaces of cross-shell parking along the east side of the property. And they're shown on the second sheet of the plan. This, the second sheet has this detail of the addition and the new parking on the north side of the building. And also, it shows 10 new spaces that will be provided for along the perimeter of the existing paved area that leads around the back of the building. So there will be, as I said, a total of 71 parking spaces, with the 57 spaces being the number required. And again, as I said, if there's congestion, the solution that the Service Center would have, they could add more parking, but they could also change their hours, increase their hours that they provide the services. Does that address your question about parking?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
The table's been there. And you've been asked also to consult with the Marine and Environmental Services Division about the existing wildlife corridor overlay district.
Well, as I said earlier, the, this line running about 74 feet east of Gifford Street is the line of the deer migration Area 1. And the zoning bylaw only has standards and requirements with respect to that deer migration corridor. There are no standards and no conditions, no requirements, set forth in the bylaw with regard to the foraging area. And the foraging area includes the rest of the property, but also extends and includes the, the electric company easement area, as I, as I said. So I don't think there are any requirements with respect to the property that we're altering. And although we have obtained the special permit for what's already existing, and revised it, and amended it once, administratively amended it once as well, and we have previous site plan review, we've never had any requirements to restrict any property on account of the wildlife corridors. In any case, even what we're doing is putting an addition in an area that is substantially already developed. And the parking that we're creating is, yes, it is in an area next to pavement that has wild vegetation in it. But it is nothing that would impede the movement of wildlife. So we don't think there's really any issue to be addressed with respect to the wildlife corridor.
I guess it wasn't whether you thought so, it was whether the Marines and Environmental Services might think so. Could you comment on the landscaping?
The zoning by, zoning bylaw, Madam Chairman, provides that the Department of Natural Resources should provide a referral. And I don't know whether they have. My guess is that they probably haven't. But I think that, that
No.
the town planner can probably confirm the accuracy of what I've stated, that there are no standards and no requirements with respect to this area. And surely, there's not any condition to be attached to the 74 feet along the street in connection with this addition.
Thank you. You want to comment on the landscaping? Jim?
I, I just wonder if you could have someone just review the operation, the process, when somebody pulls in, where do they park, how do they come in, and how do they go out? You covered it too quickly for me the last time. How do they get notified to come in?
That'd be fine. I'll ask, I'll ask Karen to, to do that. And then I'll return to your question about landscaping.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when a client comes up, they come up the long driveway, they come around behind the building, they pull into the parking on the, the circular drive, it's a one-way. They pull in. As they pull in around the back of the building, we have our, what's called our traffic volunteer. They receive their weekly menu. They can either get our weekly grocery menu online and fill it out at home, or they pick it up from the traffic volunteer.
Somebody standing in the parking lot?
Somebody standing in the parking lot, giving our grocery list. They go to their car, they park their car, they fill it out there, or they have already filled it out at home. They then go in the front entrance. They enter the front entrance, we have a check-in station there. They fill in, we check them into the computer. We go over, if we're, we're out of turkey today, we're out of lettuce today, we let them know. And they get a bakery number. We've worked hard to eliminate the stigma of coming to a food pantry, because it's so hard to walk through the doors. So they get a bakery number. So with that, they go back out to their car, and they wait. And then we call their number, we'll say number 70. And as Bob said, we've really seen an increase, particularly in the number of seniors, the number of working people, because they feel safe coming to us to pick up their food, and because we're just calling number 16, number 70, your order is ready. So it's
Speaker system, your?
We, we have a bullhorn
Bullhorn.
that we use, and we say number 60 or 70, your order is ready. And they come up and pick it up from our ramp volunteer, who hands them their order.
Someone in the hand walking around doing that?
We have somebody who's standing against the side of the building with a bullhorn, who says number 70. And then we hand off their order.
There must be signage there, because people go there for the turkey drop-off?
Yeah.
And it's very clear where you're supposed to enter, and
Yes. Yes, it's a one-way driveway. Yes, and for turkey drop-off, it's, it goes, wraps around the building. You drop your turkey off at the back, and then pull out the front.
Right.
That is the same flow that we have here.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I just wondered how they, they get notified, and I guess it's, there's nothing on the building. It's an individual with a bullhorn doing it?
Correct. Yep. Most of them wait at the bottom of the ramp. So we have a front entrance ramp and a back entrance ramp where the food comes out, it's your order. And most of them wait at the bottom of the exit ramp, because they know their food is coming out. We've perfected this system. And as I say, most people are waiting only about 10 or 12 minutes. So people have developed social relationships, they wait outside, they chit-chat, and then go off with their order.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No.
Regarding landscaping.
Thank you.
So the area between the street, going almost all the way back to the building, is a grassy area with many mature trees, which are indicated on, on the plan. There won't be any change to that area. There's no construction going on, on there. And so that puts us, again, more than 200 feet back from the street. There will be one tree removed in connection with the, the project on the northwest side of the, of the building, the west of the addition. And the plan shows that there will be a flowering tree to replace it. I think I stand corrected. I think there are maybe two trees that are being removed. There is a rose garden existing that's on the north side of the building, and the plan states that, that it will be restored. The addition, as I've said, is, will, will be barely, or perhaps more correctly, totally out of sight of abutting occupied properties. And we think that the restoration of the rose garden on one side, and the restoration of the tree area on the other, is sufficient landscaping, and that any other landscaping requirements of site plan review should be waived. And we've made that request. I don't know if, Madam Chairman, if you or other members of the board had an opportunity to review the correspondence I filed that, that addresses these and other issues. It won't surprise me if you didn't, because again, we were responding to staff reports only received in the last few days. But I did submit a letter that addresses parking, that wildlife corridor issue, the landscaping issue, lighting, and traffic issues.
I have it, but I hadn't studied it.
No, I understand, and I, it's totally, totally reasonable.
So for the record, the correspondence that you have in your file is the revised plans that Attorney Amen has gone through this evening. The additional letter that goes through the reasoning for the waiver requests. We didn't have time to make copies for you this evening. But if you would so indulge me, I can summarize quickly, or you can hear it at the next meeting. It's, it's totally up to you.
What's your, no?
So, Bob, if I miss anything, please step in. So the request is to waive the requirement for the wildlife corridor referral. Additionally, the landscaping requirement, the lighting requirement, and the traffic analysis requirement. So there are four waiver requests as part of this application. I will note that the wildlife corridor, although I don't think it would be a major issue, I think it's worthwhile just to get a, a letter from MES indicating that. And we're happy to reach out to MES on the applicant's behalf, just to make sure that they had a chance to review it. But I don't anticipate anything coming from it, provided, you know, what Attorney Amen has already gone through. The landscaping item, I concur with, it, there really isn't too much happening on the site that would affect the landscaping. Although I will note that there's some abutting properties that you may want to consider with additional traffic that may come to the site. Lighting, I believe the application includes dark sky compliant wall Lighting, I believe the application includes dark sky compliant wall packs on the addition. So I think that satisfies the requirement for the lighting. But again, I defer to public comment that might come about as a result of the new lighting. And then, as I mentioned before, I think the traffic is likely to be minimal at this site. So I would recommend that you allow for at least three of the four waiver requests. One being, one not being included would be the wildlife quarter, just simply getting a letter from MES instead of issuing the waiver.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to say anything before we act on this one way or another? No, procedurally, can we now request a positive motion for our next meeting and assume that you will have the paperwork for the waivers?
Yes, yes, you can. Yep.
Okay, is it the sense of the board that that's what we want to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so it is what we want to do, so that we will be able, at our next meeting, to vote on and to approve the site plan.
That's hugely accommodating, I appreciate it, and the Service Center appreciates it very much.
Well, it's good to see the Service Center can afford to do this, in order to better serve the people who are there. That speaks well for the town and for the management of the Service Center. So, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, for the record, we'll have that decision ready, or that draft motion ready for you for the next meeting, which is July twenty-third?
Yep.
And that is okay with the applicant?
It seemed to be very okay.
Very good.
Okay, now...
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Paul.
I thought it was interesting, there was a, included in the packet here was a signature list of fifty people who supported this project.
Well, it was a hundred and fifty-two.
A hundred and fifty, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't think that was really necessary.
No, I'm glad it caught your attention.
The point is, years ago, I worked at the Service Center a number of times, and I used to enjoy particular Thanksgiving, giving out turkeys and seeing the appreciation of people who really work hard at the Service Center, and the people who really appreciate what they received. So it's a great project, it's a great service to the community.
I mentioned the flip side of that, and that is that not only are people receiving the turkeys, but all those turkeys are donated by people who bring the turkeys to the Service Center to be given out. And that's actually one of the busiest traffic days of the year. The traffic from, I'm told, from clientele does not back up to the street. That one day of the year, so many people bring turkeys that they have had traffic back up onto Gifford Street, and for that reason, on that occasion, the Service Center hires a police detail.
That's good to hear. And look at the team they put together in order to do this project. Well done. Okay, moving forward, we're now...
I have one, I'd like to make... Hi, my name is Kathy DeChichi, and I live at six thirty-seven Gifford Street. So I'm in the development called Forest Cove Condominiums. And there is a strip of woods separating my side yard, which is really my patio, is planted right there, and the parking lot. And I do wholeheartedly support the mission of the Service Center, I think it's wonderful. But they're not silent neighbors to us. I mean, we do hear the megaphone numbers being called out, it's loud. We have that. We also have the dumpster, when it's being picked up, it's about, I think, four AM. It's very loud, it, you know, I think we've tried to address that with Cosova, to see if they could maybe pick it up at a different time, or maybe have some more ease in how they're doing it, so it doesn't, it doesn't wake us up in the middle of the night. But those are basically the issues that I have. I hope the lighting, it doesn't change much, that, you know, that's all through the night, the lights are on. But other than that, those are some of the concerns, the only really concerns that I have about the center.
Thank you, I'm sure they're listening to you as you speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we're all set. Moving on, we'll now have a public hearing that will open for House to Home Development LLC, a definitive plan application to create an eleven-lot subdivision at zero-two and twenty Lewis Street and zero-old Bayberry Lane. This is off Acapescot, reasonably near to twenty-eighth. Wow, all your supporters were here. Thank you.
Notice.
Okay, and Paul, the notice.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing.
Oh.
I developed quite a bit of the property on Thatcher's Lane and Shoreway Drive.
Right.
I have property right across the street on Acapescot. So I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I don't think I have to recuse myself, but I just want to put on notice that this is a residential development where I offer services to companies that do this, and that, you know, I possibly could work with this company or other companies in the future, it's just something I do. But that's everywhere in town.
Exactly.
So I just have to, just make sure that I notify everybody that that's what I do for a living. I sell houses.
But I think we also have to notice, because it's a definitive plan, we have to have a supermajority vote.
Right. So I plan on sitting, I think I can do the job right, but I just wanted to notify that I...
You can do that without John and Pam?
I don't know this...
We don't have to do it tonight.
Without John, we could, but Pam presumably is listening in, and she can certify that she has heard it.
Okay.
She'll have to fill out a form, the law and rule form afterward, indicating that she's reviewed all the materials and that she's reviewed the minutes or the recording of this meeting, and then she can participate in the next meeting.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. And I thought it was important since John recused himself.
Okay, so...
Notices.
Notices.
Madam Chair, the publication of this public hearing was posted four times, six fourteen, six twenty-one, six twenty-eight, and seven-five, in the Falmouth Enterprise, and one hundred abutters were notified by regular mail.
One hundred. And here are some of them, I would assume. Okay, speaking for the project.
Hello, I'm Paul Seberg from Grady Consulting. So we are here for the definitive subdivision application for the proposed subdivision located at zero-two and twenty Lewis Street and zero-old Bayberry Lane. This property consists of eleven-point-two acres and is located in the RC and Coastal Pond Overlay District. The site currently consists of two single-family dwellings, number twenty Lewis Street and number two Lewis Street here. They both have access from Lewis Street currently. The remainder of the site is open field and some garden areas in this area here. And then there's wooded areas to the back of the lot that extend out towards old Bayberry Lane here. The applicant is proposing to construct a new roadway to create frontage on ten, for ten single-family house lots. An additional lot is proposed on old Bayberry Lane, that's not part of the proposed roadway. The length of the proposed right-of-way of the street to the center line of the cul-de-sac here is five-hundred feet. And including the proposed paved area turnaround, the proposed length of pavement would be seven-hundred-and-seventy-four feet. Currently, based on the existing topography of the lot, everything slopes from the eastern portion of the lot down to a low area on the western side of the property. We are proposing catch basins and drainage manholes to convey the stormwater runoff from the site. To propose submit four bay and infiltration basin located here on the western side of the site. The stormwater system will be designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards and will fully infiltrate the hundred-year storm runoff. The proposed sewer design consists of sewer manholes to convey the sewage down to a treatment tank and a pump chamber that will pump the effluent up to a subsurface infiltration system, shown here. And this system will be designed in accordance with the Falmouth Border Health Rules and Regulations. The proposed water system is proposing to basically extend the existing water main on Lewis Street through the site here, through an easement on the subdivision, and loop it through the existing water main on Avalon Drive. We're still working out the details with the Water Department and reviewing it with And as far as electric services, we're proposing to connect off the existing electric on Lewis Street and propose underground electric for the subdivision. In addition, we have received the comments from the Engineering Division, and we're currently working on going through those comments and addressing those comments as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay, Bob?
Nothing at this point.
Jim?
Can you go over the length of the road again?
Yeah, what happens when you add the extra... Can't we just go five-hundred feet on a...
That's the limit.
But now it's seven-fifty.
Right, the way I was interpreting the bylaws is that it would be from the start of the roadway to the center of the cul-de-sac, it wouldn't include the whole road, the loop going around the cul-de-sac area? Given in a hammerhead situation, where would you consider the end of the roadway?
Why would it not include across the cul-de-sac to the very far edge of the road?
So for clarity, if the applicant so desires, they can request a waiver of the five-hundred feet, too. So if you're okay, you know, if they want to maintain the distance of the roadway as currently presented, and your interpretation is a longer distance, you know, the solution could be one of two things, one, shorten the roadway, or two, just request a waiver that, you know, would allow for whatever that distance is to the back of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
We can certainly...
So it would be straight, a straight line to the back of the cul-de-sac instead of to the center of the cul-de-sac?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be, the length of the proposed roadway in that case would be, I think approximately, I forget the radius of that right-of-way, but I think approximately eighty feet longer, I want to say?
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
And so that would go to the full seven-hundred-and-fifty or five...
Five-hundred-and-eighty, in that case, approximately.
Five-eighty?
Correct, yep.
Only eighty feet across the cul-de-sac?
Eighty-foot radius, I don't have the exact number.
Well, whatever, you'll get it measured and it will, so that the waiver reads right.
Yep, exactly, we'll correct that in the waiver request. Let me see if I can get the exact number.
Okay, the other, Jim, any further comment?
The zoom is in the top middle.
Really, that's the, so we can waive that requirement. I thought it was like, I thought we had, I thought it was just you can't have anything more than five-hundred feet unless you put in another means of temporary egress. We've done that in previous subdivisions.
In the past, yeah.
In the past.
Yep.
But we could also just waive it, this...
Correct.
Okay.
So I did confirm, I'm sorry, I did confirm that it is eighty-foot radius, so it would be five-hundred-and-eighty feet in this case.
Okay.
So what we would do, just for the record and for clarity, is if they submitted their waiver request to five-hundred-and-eighty, we would send that to the Fire Department to make sure that they were okay with it. If they didn't have any issue with it, then we would bring it back to you folks indicating such.
That's the ticket.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So it's the Fire Department that makes that call out.
I mean, that's really the purpose of the five-hundred-foot distance.
Yeah, I just want to question something. Eighty feet isn't that much when you're in a car and you're trying to go around something. So, you know, take a look at your spacing there and see if that's the amount that you need.
It is pretty tight, we're, we need to get the frontage on the lots, so we're kind of, pretty much maxed out at our frontage requirements for each lot at this point.
Uh-huh.
So we will need that additional eighty feet in this case.
It will be tight.
Pat, did you have any questions?
Were you suggesting that maybe they want more than the eighty feet because it was so tight?
Oh, you're talking about the turnaround?
Yeah.
Yeah, the turnaround is very tight.
So our turnaround is actually larger than your standard turnaround, because we actually increased the right-of-way diameter than gave them required. So we actually have a fairly large turnaround area. It's about two-hundred and, I want to say it's two-hundred and, what's the difference between the seven-hundred and the five? I believe it was two-hundred and seventy square feet, two-hundred-and-seventy feet?
Yeah, you originally said...
Yeah.
On top of the five-hundred, it would be another two-fifty to get to the back of the cul-de-sac, the furthest point on it.
So it would be another, so the, we're measuring the five-hundred feet to the, we originally measured the five-hundred feet to the center line of the cul-de-sac in a straight line, not going around the circular first portion of the cul-de-sac.
So it'd be from the center out, it'd be the radius.
Right, exactly. So extending that straight line through the center of the cul-de-sac to the edge of the right-of-way would be an additional eighty feet.
That, oh, okay.
The actual distance around the cul-de-sac.
I misunderstood, I thought you were starting from where the road widens out to include the cul-de-sac.
No, no.
No, okay, my mistake.
Yeah, no worries.
Then, I have a question about the landscaping, because it looked, reading the plan, you've planned on the correct spacing for the trees, if, I'm assuming the circles, the little tiny circles, are the trees? What about, where was the part where you were showing that kind of industrial-looking setup around, just as you come off the road, back to the beginning, up on the right-hand side, yeah, right there, that? Are you planning to landscape that in such a way that you're not aware of those things?
What exactly are you referring to? This is the existing house there, number twenty?
Yeah, but just beyond that...
Right here?
It looked, it looked on your plan...
That's where the septic system's going.
But he said there was some sort of...
So that's a subsurface structure, so you would actually see that, that would look like an existing wall.
Oh, okay.
And these right here are the underground tanks that we're proposing.
So the only requirement for landscaping, then, is along the street? Paul?
I have a question on lot, is this a ten-lot subdivision or eleven-lot subdivision?
So it's a ten-lot subdivision, technically, the lot eleven would be really considered an A&R lot in this case?
Lot number one is the wastewater treatment plant, and there's a requirement to add additional treatment, should it be necessary in the future. And it wouldn't, appears it would not be room for another house in that area. It's no longer a forty-thousand-foot, square-foot area because of the wastewater treatment up there.
So the weight...
It doesn't show in that drawing. If you look at drawing number four... Yeah.
Right, so this would be your conventional-sized system? And, yeah, this is your wastewater treatment system?
There is a requirement to add space for potentially adding future treatment.
Reserve area?
So I'm not sure how that house is going to fit on that one property.
Correct, we demonstrated that we provided an area for a reserve area within the existing system. In the event that it would need to be replaced, it would be removed and replaced in the same location.
On the same basis, lot number eleven, wastewater's going to be pumped through the entire property all the way up to lot one?
So it's going to flow by gravity from lot eleven all the way down to our tanks shown here?
By gravity?
There's a proposed pump chamber that will pump it to the system here. It's also designed for potential expansion of the sewer within the town. So in the event that sewer becomes available on Thatcher Lane and Lewis Street, we can tie in by gravity hopefully to this, from this manhole right here to the sewer system in the future.
From that one parcel, what about the others?
Well, they would, they all flow down to this one manhole right here, and then they flow into your tanks, your by-gravity, and then they're pumped up to the system.
I didn't see the topography allowing for that, but if you say it is, that's fine.
Right, it works by gravity, the tanks are fairly deep in order to get it here by gravity, but it will work.
Pat?
You're explaining more of what I had questions of, so...
Yep.
You are treating the septicage from all of the homes in that system?
Exactly. One of the border health requirements are, any subdivision has to be in a shared system. So we're routing it to a shared system on this lot here. And also, we're providing a treatment unit for the nitrogen loading as well.
Okay. Are you going to have a homeowners association?
Yes.
That would be responsible, then, for the tender-loving care of all of that?
Exactly, yep. That's the plan, to have a homeowners association.
Any other questions from the board? Bob?
Are all the utilities going to be run underground?
Yes, electric, yeah, we have water and electric, really, in the main two utilities and sewer, everything's underground, yep.
Any gas in the neighborhood?
I don't believe gas is available in the neighborhood.
Any provisions for lighting?
We did propose some street lighting, I believe there was... Let's see what sheet they're shown on here.
They're on the same, they're on sheet three.
Sorry, this is a little difficult for me to read here, I'm not familiar with this screen. So we do have a proposed light here at the entrance-
Mm-hmm.
And then we have an additional light down here at the cul-de-sac, shown here. Another light shown here on the other side of the cul-de-sac. And I believe those are the three lights that we are proposing at this time.
Yeah, I didn't see any others. And you think that's sufficient?
We have to provide more lighting, if the board would like to see some more lighting, that's okay with us.
Could be dark. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry.
I see that the road layout is 44 feet wide.
Correct.
Is that to allow for any sidewalk?
Yes, we are proposing a sidewalk on the westly side of the roadway, shown here.
Okay. And what material is going to be used for that?
Asphalt, big concrete.
And how wide is the pavement going to be for the roadway itself?
So the roadway pavement, I believe it's 20 feet with one-foot Cape Cod berm on each side, so 22 feet total.
Okay.
Just let me confirm that.
I couldn't find it.
It's on the cross-section here. Yes, so 20 feet wide with one, yep, Cape Cod berm on each side.
Good.
And the engineering department didn't question the way the road is designed, the underground and so forth?
The engineering division had multiple comments, as you can see in the staff report. So I do believe that the applicant indicated that they're going to be addressing them.
Yes, we'll submit our eyes plans to address that comments.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly what they mentioned about the street, but-
It had to do with the elevation of the roadway pitch, our cul-de-sac design is not crowned in the middle.
Yeah.
Instead, we have it super elevated to one side to direct runoff to the one catch basin on the one side. We're happy to provide a super elevated, I mean a crowned roadway, but that would just require an additional catch basin that we don't really feel is necessary.
Okay, we all set with board questions, Jim?
I just want to ask the landscaping question with the sidewalk. Are there any trees planted right near the sidewalk?
They're on the plan.
We can look into that to see if there's any existing trees that-
The only reason why I bring it up is, I know it takes about 20, 30 years to show it, but I've been in this town for a long time, and I see these beautiful sidewalks that get totally destroyed in about 15 years with tree roots coming up, and you can't even use them anymore because you can't, no one can walk them, they're bumped. And it just seems, if we put the tree in the right place, we wouldn't have to worry about that down the road. But is this going to always be a private road? Or is the town, does this be applied to the town sometime could pick it up?
They're right on the sidewalk.
Well, I don't know, how do you stop those trees from growing roots to totally destroy the sidewalk?
We could eliminate the trees along the sidewalk, if that would be acceptable. The sidewalk area here, we're only proposing-
I just know in 20 years-
Yeah.
The sidewalk's going to be trashed.
I agree with you, I see that all the time as well.
But they have to do them to either side of the driveway by our landscaping requirements.
Maybe you could take a look at it, at your-
Sometime I would like to bring the pictures to the board of what we do to our-
No, I believe you, not trip on them.
You can't, it makes, Mill Road has become impassable on the sidewalks.
What we do is, we have our trees planted close, away from any sidewalk on the homeowner's property. We require like a week-
I wonder if there's a solution, it just, for the first five years, no one's even going to notice it. But if you really, if you are a planning board, you're supposed to take a longer view. This is our only time to weigh in on that subject. And I just look out my window every morning, and I see people that can't even get down, they have to come in my yard to get around the bump in the sidewalk.
Well, you can see right there in the plan.
They would all-
The circles are the trees, and the trees are right on, they look as if they're on the sidewalk.
Well, in 25 years, that sidewalk will be trashed by those trees, in my opinion.
Yeah, look at the bicycle path.
I know.
Yeah.
So if, I mean, Bob has excellent suggestion. Can we make it a policy, we talk to the homeowner and see if we could give him a tree, put it on their land and have a sidewalk that everyone could use? That would make far more sense if we are a planning board, it's supposed to be looking towards the future.
He doesn't have people in those houses right now.
They could make, they own the land, they could put it on themselves, they could say they want it there. I mean, you don't have to, no one else does it, but sooner or later, people should pay attention to this fact. I just get reminded of it every day.
From the board? From the public, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, let's, go ahead.
How you doing, Tim Souza?
Please come here.
Tim Souza, I live on Lewis Street, I own the entirety of the right side of Lewis Street and about a quarter of Thatcher's that go on, there is natural gas on that street.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Tim Souza, I live on Lewis Street, I own the right side of that, the abutting properties and on Thatcher's to that private road, which is Lewis Street. There is natural gas there, my home, 5 Lewis Street does have natural gas on that street, I know that question came up. Just question about, like the electric, the road, will it be tore up? How long will it take to bury the fixtures? It is a private road, so will your company be repairing it? Because Lewis is, Lewis is private. It goes, Lewis goes this way, Thatcher's comes around, so it's interesting.
So your concern is?
If the burying those things, it's a private road, will his company be repairing? Any damage to the road?
Uh, yes, well, of course, the D.C. government requires.
All right.
As far as the electric, the electric is going to be in the proposed utility pole, so it's going to-
If you're going to speak, you need to come here.
So if there's, there's going to be a proposed utility pole at the entrance, so it's going to run overhead to the proposed utility pole, then underground within our property. So we're not going to require any sort of removal of the pavement to do the electric work. But as far as the water main, they will have to saw-cut a small section of pavement to connect into the existing water main and repair that as needed.
Mr. Souza, did that answer your question?
It answered my question, yeah.
Okay, I saw another hand over here, someone who wanted to speak. No, 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 you have, excuse me, you do have to come here to the microphone, give your name and then speak. That's the connection to the people at home.
I don't hear very well, but I thought I heard you say that the roadway is going to be 20 feet-
Um, sir, sir.
Are the roadways going to be 20 feet wide, the roadway, is that what he said?
The pavement.
The pavement.
The pavement.
The pavement's going to be 20 feet wide.
Yeah.
How wide is a garbage truck? What happens when somebody is leaving one of the lots, coming down into the cul-de-sac, and here comes an offset trash removal?
Most roads are 18.
They can't pass each other.
It becomes a one-lane road.
20 feet is, meets our bylaw and then some. Did you wish to speak?
I'm George R. Caw, I'm from 63 Old Bayberry Lane. And my concern right now is this easement, 20 feet wide. Now, that is the easement for a water pipe, right?
Yes.
I don't, for me, that's going to be like a roadway to get onto Old Bayberry Lane. Old Bayberry Lane is a dirt road. It has no drainage. If we get cars going down that easement, which called the easement now, it's going to destroy the road. Because even when the town, the town does a great job at helping us keep that road relatively flat. And even that, because of the fact that the road is lower than the surrounding area, if, if we can destroy it with just a few homes, if they use it to come onto that road, you know, we won't even be able to drive the road.
I didn't understand that that was part of the plan, would you like to comment on that?
So that's not part of the plan, this is not an access easement, this is strictly a utility easement. So we're only proposing to run a water and sewer line underground. So there will be no road here or any sort of access with vehicles through this area, yeah.
So you'll be restoring the topography as it was after you put in your pipe or whatever?
Exactly.
And then vegetation will grow on it?
Right.
Right, it won't be any kind of a roadway?
Yes, there will be no roadway through there.
And the same would be?
We're required, I think that's the minimum required width for an easement. The town's manager can confirm that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it would be the same as on the western easement?
Correct, yeah.
That's the drainage easement on the west side.
What we do on the road. Can you hear me all right?
Well, it's the people at home.
Our rules are you have to stand there to speak.
Okay. Can't even think of what I was going to say. If, what we do is, if we have to resurface the road, and it's just patchwork, okay, we all chip in, all right? And that kind of takes the burden off, because it's an expensive thing to do. And if these people here on this development are going to start using this road, I feel like they're going to have to pitch in for this road.
Sir, in order, in order to drive from the turnaround of the cul-de-sac down to Old Bayberry Road, they would have to drive across some other homeowner's property. There's no way that's going to be used as a roadway.
Yeah, just, just on this easement right here. Now, this easement's going to be 20 feet wide. You know, that's, that's a pretty good size.
On paper, I can see where it's a concern.
Going right into-
But I think in actuality, in reality, the topography will be restored. You're not going to be able to see that it's, that there's an easement there. People might know about it, but it's not going to be in any way prepared for cars, or would either of the homeowners to either side of it permit it to be used that way?
Because right now, this one, this one right here, this is a path.
Right.
Okay, and the guy that runs it, he's running a pickup truck, and he's got bees. And he's, and he's got his bees down in here, someplace, the hives, stuff like that. And he does pretty good going through there, okay? That's, that's a concern that I have, is maintaining the road. You know, because I know the town's not going to accept the road. Okay, that's, that's been by the boards. And, but, we don't want to be left holding the bag, so.
Right.
Well, there's only going to be one of those lots that is located on Old Bayberry, so only one, one more lot, so that might be somebody that owns that lot, buys that property. They would contribute to the maintenance of Old Bayberry, I would suspect, so.
I hope.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment or ask, come forward, please? Wait, we're taking turns, and I think the gentleman at the back here-
Go ahead.
You want me to show you that? Let me know when I get to it.
And just bringing up so that you can see the Avalon.
Does this help right here? This portion of it?
No.
Okay.
Keep going, right there, that one.
Yep.
Can that be a board?
Yep, I'll zoom in for you.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
My name's Bob, I live on Avalon Drive, and, correct me if I'm wrong, behind all the properties on Avalon Drive, there was a fire lane there. Now, when this development goes in, are they going to just butt up against my property and everybody else's? Or is that fire lane still going to stay there?
That's a good question, do you have an answer? Would you come to the microphone? Please come to the microphone to speak.
I'm not aware of any filing easement through there, but we can certainly look into that to make sure that-
Could you please?
Isn't-
One other question I've got with respect to this, 11 lots. I've lived there 30, 32 years, and I remember old man DeMello who used to farm the land there. And I've walked through there, I'm surprised that it's actually 11 acres. I mean, in the winter, we see a lot of wildlife, geese land there, you know, there's all sorts of wonderful wildlife there. I'm just concerned that it's not going to, I'm going to look out my back door one day or go out to the end of my property and not see the nice trees there, but somebody else's backyard. Me personally, I think that's too many lots. I know they're one-acre lots, and they're stretched like in a pie shape. I still think that that's too many lots, and what about the environmental concerns? Is that huge septic tank, is it a actual septic tank that takes all the effluent from each of the homes?
Please direct your questions here.
Yeah, I'm to the board end here. If we can both end, maybe get that question answered.
Yes, that's a septic system that will treat all the homes rather than individual systems.
Right.
And that's a requirement from the board of health as well.
I understand, so that's going to have to be emptied by a septic company frequently, right? Is there a leaching, a type of leaching field, or is it all self-contained?
So there is a proposed leaching field, so that will infiltrate the effluent on-site. They will have to do pumping and maintenance to their tanks as you would with the residential home.
If you have 11 properties in this, I think it's a small area, too small for 11 lots. The nitrogen levels are going to go crazy in there. And where it's all located close to that one property, I wouldn't want to live in that house that's on Shaw or Drive that butts up against it. You see what I'm saying?
I see exactly what you're saying, it's always sad to see the open land go, but, you know, it's private property and they're entitled to do this by law.
And that is a peninsula, that's not just a regular land. You've got, you know, Green Harbor on one side, and you've got the other on the other side, and I don't know. It just seems like a lot in one small area.
Well, this will be, or has been reviewed by the board of health-
It is a denitrification system, right?
Is it a denitrification system?
Yes, it will be a denitrification system.
Yes, it is.
All we can require is that.
Right.
What about the wildlife there?
Wait, when I-
What about the wildlife that lives there now? Trust me, I'm not a tree hugger, I'm an electrician, I do work, but I like to see the environment, you know, instead of being encroached. It's turning, turning into a little mini-city on this peninsula.
It's in a buffer zone for conservation, if it is, it can be reworked.
Under our bylaws, unless there's a buffer zone for conservation, this, the plan here fits the bylaws as they're written now.
Would be nice if they cut those down from one acre to maybe a half an acre and leave that, that whole area there for the wildlife. Because they come, there's ducks, there's geese, and everything, where they going to go next? I just said my piece.
I know, I sympathize with your point.
Good evening, my name's Ed Smith, I'm in the butter. And as I've been reminded many times, I'm just some of people. But, the, I've been some of people for a long time. And I can prove it with a receipt for our original lot and cottage down there, including the cottage, was 600 bucks. So, that was a year or two ago. I actually had just a couple of questions and concerns here. I will, a couple of points were brought up. It was brought up that there is gas on Thatcher, there's also gas on Avalon that come up. I know, because I helped get it in there. And the, another question on the wildlife, I, we have a very healthy pack of coyotes up there that will have to be relocated, I'm sure that's of importance. I had one in my backyard the other day, he was cute. My biggest question is, first of all, let me say that I am, there's been a lot of speculation over the years and different stories floating around of what was going to happen to that land back there, okay? I am, think I speak for many that are very pleased and relieved that the access will not be from Avalon, and that Avalon will not be restored through what is now Old Bayberry Lane as was the original road layout for that development. Avalon went all the way through. And many times, we sat in front, in our front yard and watched- And many times, we sat in front, in our front yard and watched the truckers, who looked at the map and decided they were gonna cut around that traffic and they'd get to the end of Avalon and back all the way back out. So, a little bit of history there. But my concern is, and it was mentioned, the easement, I don't think, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna become a roadway. It's an easement. It's not a, a, an access. It's an easement to put down a pipe and get out of there. I did, I thought I saw on one of the plans, and I have a small laptop and eyes aren't good, but that the, there's gonna be a water tap or connection at least. And I thought it said on Avalon on the plan. I'm not sure. Uh, it, but you said you're also gonna feed water from Thatcher, okay? Well, I know Avalon only has a six-inch main. I don't know what Thatcher has, but I doubt if it's like much larger. And I'm gonna assume, and I think it's minimum now to run an eight-inch main in, in the development. And as a thirty-year firefighter, I know you can't feed an eight-inch main with a six-inch main and get enough flow. And I know you're working it out with the wa- water department, but I think that would be a concern. Now you turn around and say, "Okay, how are you gonna fix that? Do you need to tear up Avalon to put in a bigger main?" I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure it's gonna be looked at. You also mentioned that there was, you mentioned just a few minutes ago that there was also a septic connection at, at that point. Same place where the water connection is. But I think it's on the plan. You said, you said it. Not you, Paul. Uh, I think the developer said that there was a septic connection, which wouldn't surprise me. 'Cause, you know, we hoping sooner or later we will get the sewerage. I think that's on, on the docket in, in planning. Makes all the sense in the world. I'd love to see it happen sooner than later. I think I speak for a lot of people there. And if that's, where is the septic gonna tie in for this development? So now you basically have a water issue. They think should, it can be and should be addressed. But you're talking about possibly having to enlarge your water supply, which is now affecting roadway. I think we have eight-inch on Avalon, but I'm not sure. That would be a water department question. But if you're gonna, if you have a six-inch going in there and you're gonna add another eleven homes draining off that six-inch main, now you're gonna affect everybody's supply. So I think it's, it's a critical thing to be included and, and, and get it addressed, especially since it may involve some roadways as the septic would, and the sewage would, uh, involve roadways. I would hope there would be some concern, let's do it once, not twice. Okay, if we're gonna have to change the water and eventually do septic, let's do it now. Maybe we can, I don't know if there's any type of coordination with other boards and plans and everything else. Maybe if we could push up the septic a little bit and do it now and not put in, upgrade the water, tear up the road, replace the road, get it all done, then tear it up to put in septic. Makes no sense. I think, can we be, you mentioned, you know, looking forward and looking out. Let, let's look at the bigger picture. Is, is there some way we can address all this to everybody's benefit? I'm happy to see it happens. It's gonna happen eventually and it's, as I say, we're relieved. We really, I was hoping it wouldn't become a, a thoroughfare in the back and not a, and not a, a cut-through and it go all the way through and, and all that. But, uh, I just wanna put those two concerns on, on the table and hope they'll be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. We've made a note of it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, um, Tim Leahy from Seven Family Lane off of Shorewood Drive. We've been there fifty-five, fifty-six years. I also had the concerns of the gentleman that, uh, that the development may be too big for the area and I understand progress. And I was also concerned about the, the wildlife. Everybody that's along that, uh, that edge knows about the coyotes, the hawks, the, everything else that is in there. That's just, I, I'm thinking that it was too big myself. But if he could also bring up, uh, the lot number, not lot number...
Uh, uh, could you please address?
If he could also bring up lot number two, I have something just that I'm not sure about. As far as lot number two, does it end right there or does it? I see there's a swath of land that goes across. I mean, from here to here, what is all, is that all drainage?
Do you have any answer to this question? So lot number two extends all the way, this is the rare line of lot number two here.
So it goes all over, this is all lot number two?
Yep, that's correct.
I mean, it just seems like a weird configuration to be pulling all these...
That's a really odd shape. Could you explain your reasoning there?
Uh, the reasoning is to gain, right now it's forty thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet.
To get the square footage.
The reason's to get the square footage within this area. And the minimum lot width is fifty feet, so we're maintaining the minimum lot width as well.
So this from here to here is what?
It's over fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Correct.
I mean, well, that proves my point.
And lot, could you point out what lot three, is lot three actually that weird shape?
Again, it's to get the square footage.
It's with the square footage.
Do you have a plan that shows this, the circle you're supposed to show for the width of, uh, the lots? There's a hundred-foot circle in the middle. Usually when we see a subdivision plan...
It's on the lotting sheet.
Okay, there it is. It's very faint.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, I was very faint. So that's the important part, that they meet the frontage and they meet that, uh, that width right there.
Yeah.
And the rest of the shape of the lot is not really in our...
Well, I still feel this is very odd. They have lots like this. I mean, what are you gonna do with this fifty feet of land as far as? I don't know why they couldn't develop the square...
Oh, it, it's a good question. You're right, it's odd, but it's allowable.
I'm sorry?
You're right about it being an odd shape, but it's allowable. It's got the frontage, it's got the width, and it's got the size.
I mean, I think that's something that should be looked at.
Well, we're looking at it right now and telling you that it's allowable.
Okay.
It meets our subdivision criteria.
I got you. I just think it's...
It's a big deal to change that. It's a town meeting all over, you know, it's not our job to do that.
Actually, in a way, the, the people that abut that...
That's nice for them.
Weird section. That's actually kinda nice for them because...
Depending upon what you do with it.
Yeah.
But that was my concern, that's all.
A lot depends on where the houses actually are put eventually on those lots. And where the houses, the lots budding it are. If they're far enough apart, the coyotes don't have to move. The coyotes next to my house don't seem to require a lot of land.
Oh, I agree.
Right. They're just there. And I like them. They're keeping the deer down.
Coyote's den under my shed.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Come ahead.
Good evening. Lynn Cohen. I live at forty-seven Old Bayberry Lane, which is roughly the house lot across from lot eleven. I've been here twenty-eight years and I love the town. I wanna look, just try to do some macro-type comments and then personalize a little. My understanding is there's going to be a, an affordable housing lot that's going to abut on the southern sent, side of this development. Um, on Acapescot. That's gonna have roughly twenty-two to twenty-four houses. There's also gonna be eleven, well, ten houses egressing out on Thatcher and some number one coming out right now on Old Bayberry. If you've driven up Acapescot, you know trying to get out on Route twenty-eight is very hard. I'm just talking about the density, how you're changing the area. I understand that that's gonna be developed. I did, I understood it when I moved in. Old Bayberry Lane, as my neighbors talked about, is a dirt road. I'm at the very end. There's a berm or, I don't know what the technical word is, between Old Bayberry and Avalon. The reason where Old Bayberry fell quickly is the fire department or police department or combination asked us to rename our section of the street so that trucks, emergency trucks would know that they can't go down it to get to Avalon. And that's why we named it Old Bayberry. Uh, that's coming down. So my biggest concern is maintenance of the road, being able to get out of my house selfish while they're putting in all this pipework from Avalon for the water. Because my driveway is, well, you can't see it on this, but where that little pathway is, that's where my driveway is. I envision trucks using that, because there's a twenty-foot easement, to come in with their big front loaders, back loaders, to do, um, the work there, causing me not to have egress out of my property. Also that that road can't take all that heavy equipment. So even though it's just sort of on the corner, if you saw my property line, I'm literally right there. So I'm concerned about, we maintain that road, the desiccation of that road, and how long this project is gonna take. Because I'm willing, I, I don't mind having ten really nice tax-paying houses in that area. There's lots of trees and vegetation. I'm gonna be sad about some of it coming down. But I'm more personal, I wanna know that my quality of life and the quality of life of my neighbors doesn't change because they're building a subdivision. Like I said, it's personal. Anyway.
What assurances could you provide?
Um, as far as construction, I mean, there's only gonna be a single-family house lot shown here. Same construction vehicles required as would be required to repair a septic system for any of the adjacent properties. And as far as the connection to, from the utilities, they're gonna be running on the Wesley side corner of the lot here and connecting to Avalon Drive. And I believe their house is located here in the driveways, existing driveways approximately in this location here. So that shouldn't interfere with her access to her driveway at all.
There's apparently some sort of a raised barrier between, um, Old Bayberry and Avalon.
Right. There's basically a, a soil berm, a grass berm in a wooded area between Avalon and Bayberry.
And what will happen to that?
So they'll just be, um, cutting through it to install the, uh, water service and then restoring it to its existing condition.
It's wooded. How are they going to restore it?
Well, they'll have to cut through the wood, the, minor clearing through the woods to connect to the water main. But they can, we can propose plantings if needed as well. But there's not an actual huge berm or anything like that. It's just somewhat of a small...
And it sounds as if that's off the property that you actually control.
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
The berm that we're discussing must be not on the property that you control, but beside it.
It's within the right-of-way of the streets and within the private roadway of, of Old Bayberry.
Is there some way to show on a drawing the work proposed for going through the berm and restoring it?
Well, my understanding is that they would do that with the water department or the, you know, appropriate utility division within the town, not through this process. So they would file a permit to extend all that work and file appropriate plans with them.
And they would raise those issues and they would go and look at it?
Correct.
So some assurances are provided?
If it's on paper, I feel like so we should go with the septic back. But like I said, my big concern is they're going to be putting together this water and other things off of Old Bayberry on the pond versus off of Avalon or off of there, going into their things. That's my concern, is that I'm gonna have, and like I said, it's personal. I'm gonna have years of trucks coming down Old Bayberry to get to this, all these hookups, all these, uh, things because of the easement. And that's actually on Old Bayberry, not on the Thatcher and Lewis, Louis, something.
I don't think it would be years. I don't think they're allowed to take years, are they?
I, I don't know that I understand, but what I think I'm, I'm hearing is, is there's concern that connecting the, the water line and the sewer line or the septic line would come through Old Bayberry? The construction vehicles would come through Old Bayberry to do that work?
I think definitely, 'cause they can't come through Avalon.
So I think, you know, if I'm speaking out of turn, obviously the applicant can correct.
Can I point to something? This, oh, I can, this easement is actually on Old Bayberry. Not on Avalon, not on one of the others. So if they're coming down to that easement area to work, they're coming down Old Bayberry. That's...
Correct. But then I think once they're finished with that work at that easement location where it meets Old Bayberry, the remainder of that work will not, to my knowledge, require construction vehicles to come down Old Bayberry to then go up the easement.
Well, that's, that's the hopeful thing, but as they're building those houses... They can use the easement.
I just have a point. I believe we heard them say lot eleven is an A and R. It's not even part of the subdivision. So it doesn't hit our subdivision control laws, right?
Right.
So, I mean, we're talking about something, this traffic that she's mentioned refers to all the other ten lots. But her concern is lot eleven, and I thought I heard them say that that was an A and R.
Well, in an A and R, it's a by right, right?
Approval not required. It already is a building lot by itself. You could go and put a house on it today. Boom, done. You don't have to come to this board to build a single-family home. I, I believe that's what I heard.
It was said.
Right, it could be considered as an A and R lot, um, based on the frontage on the existing private way and lot area. We could submit an A and R plan just showing that lot at this point.
Oh, I thought you said you were. You said it could. I was confused. He did say A and R, but you're not. It is part of the subdivision, right?
It's listed as part of the subdivision.
Okay. But it...
But it could be...
You could build a house on that today without the subdivision.
Right.
And it's to have the trucks coming down and that would happen automatically. But not for all the other lots, the other ten lots, they have to come in the other way.
Correct.
And there is, is no other way?
They would, yes, they would. They would come in from Acapescot. It wouldn't come in Old Bayberry.
There's no entrance from Acapescot. It's from...
Thatcher.
Louis.
Louis, yeah.
But that wouldn't be in front of you.
But when would that be ready? And again, if they're putting in utilities first, they're gonna be coming down Old Bayberry, 'cause that's where the water starts. That's where other utilities start.
Not for the entire subdivision, do they?
So the only utilities we're proposing through this area here is just the water main. There's no sewer coming through here. The sewer is gonna run from this proposed house here and connect into a sewer easement that runs from here to the existing sewer manual here. So the sewer portion of the easement actually starts right here and does not extend any further this way. We're only proposing to connect to the existing water main on Avalon Drive. So the, it'll only require about a five-foot deep trench and would not take very long for them to construct.
Right. And the only question about the water main is the capacity of the, of the pipes as they connect.
Exactly.
So no other utility is going through there.
Correct.
My other question is, I'm the only house on well water. And my well is fairly close to the Old Bayberry Lane. What are the rules to protect that from runoff and stuff while they're doing all this building? I'm trying to protect my well, my land.
Well, so...
And the Board of Health is, is, yeah.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of your particular property, it's, it's separate from the subdivision plan. So in the subdivision, there would be rules and regulations that they, that the applicant would have to follow with that particular lot because that's just a connection with the water service. That will be handled through likely the water department.
Okay, but even though that's part of the subdivision now, lot eleven?
There's no septic system going on that lot.
No, there is. But it's not coming close to...
It's being piped up to the upper lot.
Okay, but what I'm saying is as they're building...
For a well, and for a well, they have to be a hundred feet from any septic system to a well.
Okay.
'Cause I have a well as well.
All right. So in the erosion and runoff and everything from all this building?
They, they have to mitigate any runoff. They'll put compost socks or fencing or whatever.
That, that's a requirement.
Okay. Okay. Good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, it's something for you to watch out for, too.
No, I want to watch for the coyotes. They've been talking, mating, whatever, in that lot. So I look forward to more ta, good taxpayers and no traffic, hopefully. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would just...
I just want to clarify, I want to understand something. We keep hearing, talking about wildlife. Is this in a buffer zone or is there a wildlife card that's affected it? So there's really, we have nothing to say about those issues.
We can follow up with the Conservation Commission.
Right. But those, those responsibilities go with the Conservation Commission and not with this board. I just wanted to keep us on the right track here, because everyone's concerned about it, but I'm afraid that's not our job. Somebody, it's another board's job. It's the town's job. It's just not, not us.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, board. Then we'll continue this till our next meeting and...
Provided that the applicant can revise plans and address the comments from the Engineering Division. That might be a little tight.
I was going to ask him when he would like to continue, too.
So when is the, we probably won't make it to the next meeting. The next meeting's this month, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably, I would think the following meeting would be better.
Okay. To August.
August 13th.
Okay, that'd be good. Yes. Thank you.
I have a question on the engineering. You said you have a...
She'll yell at you.
I just have a question. You said on the engineering, I didn't know about this. There was engineering questions?
Yes.
And you said there was a packet?
Yes.
How do I get, do I go online for that packet?
You can come right up to the Planning Board, um, office tomorrow and you can review the file. It's in the file.
Can we get that printed out or...
Yep. You can have a copy. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
We all set? So we're continued now till August 13th for this. So moving on, Planning Board discussion. Um, we're going to, and on that part of the agenda, there is just a report from the Planning Department, if we could.
So we're very excited to announce that the Attorney General's Office has approved all of the zoning amendments that you put forward for, for the April Town Meeting?
Yes, that was very good news. Thank you.
So that included modifications to the Senior Care Retirement District, which you're intimately familiar with.
Mm-hmm.
It included the edits to the conversion of a dwelling use in multiple zoning districts in town. And it cleared up and changed the way we show our definitions in the zoning bylaw. So we're all very excited about those. So that's very good news. And now we're working with the town clerk to make sure that those edits get made expeditiously so that we can publish them online as soon as we can.
Okay.
Yep. Very excited.
Is that the end of it? There's no more coming out?
From April.
From April?
Yeah. We've got, we've got a long list.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That will be starting up very soon for November.
We're at work all the time on that.
Yes. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Coming up, right.
Yes. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee,